And get to the business if we don't have our people here that we are waiting on this evening. So I will begin our meeting with our invocation led by Pastor Brandy Rice of Faith Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Lane. Please rise. And I do not see Pastor?
He's right there.
Oh, Pastor, come forward, please.
I would like to share a scripture that I was thinking about out of Romans 13. It says, "Let every soul be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except from God; and the authorities that exist are appointed by God." And I was thinking about how the decisions and the rulings that are made by this council affects the citizens of West Covina, and we are subject to that. And that's the way it is. That's the way it should be. It's ordained by God. But at the same time, this council is not only answerable to the citizens that voted them into office, but to God Himself. And the heaviness of that responsibility, I count it privileged to have the opportunity to pray for you tonight. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, and we ask you to take consider the lives and people that are affected by the decisions that are made in this room. And God, we'd ask your anointing and your blessings over it. Over the children that are in our parks, to the gangs that are trying to sell them the drugs, and the elderly, and everyone in between, God, you see them. And God, we're accountable to you for them. And God, we come to you and ask for your wisdom, that we would see what you see, and we'd make the right decisions, that we would have insight, that not only we see on the outside, but we can see on the inside in what this would cause and how this would affect others. And understanding, God, because it's through understanding that we can make good and right decisions. And God, we ask for your anointing and blessing on these that are leading this city. And God, we'd ask for your blessings on this meeting tonight, that your kingdom come and your will be done in West Covina, California, on earth as it is in heaven. In Christ's name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you. If you please join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please. Mayor, Chairman Sanderson, here. Mayor Pro Tem, Vice Chairman Hertford. Councilmember Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Tui.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, any reporting out from closed session?
There is no closed session, so there's nothing to report out.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda this evening?
I have no changes to this agenda tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, we will do our presentations. However, I would like to ask Mr. Freeland if all our guests that we are going to be are here this evening.
We are still waiting for Congresswoman Judy Chu, who will be in attendance.
Okay. If it's the council's pleasure that we go ahead and do the business of the meeting until she arrives, if that's okay? All right. Then at this time, I would like to move forward. Is that okay with you? All right. We would then have our oral communications. We have a five-minute speaking limit, and you come to the dais when I call your name. And those yellow cards at the top of the stairs, if you'd like to speak on items on the agenda. Our first speaker is Mr. Philip Moreno.
Members of the council, city staff, citizens, I'd like to have this put under the record for the city, so in case anybody has a reference. And I have a copy for each of the council members. My name is Philip Moreno, and I have lived at 424 North Willow Avenue in the city of West Covina since 1979. I chose to live in West Covina because it had the best schools in the East San Gabriel Valley. I served in the Air Force Reserve from 1970 through 1976. During the Vietnam War, it was my job to fly injured service personnel back home to the United States. In November of 1971, I joined the LA County Sheriff's Department, and I retired on March 28th of 2006. I served the citizens of LA County for over 34 years. I was appointed by Councilmember Nancy Manners to serve on the West Covina Parks and Recreation Commission in 1989. I was then appointed to the Human Services Commission in 1992 and served on that body till 1995. No one presently on the city council was appointed by anyone. Each of you here are because the citizens of West Covina elected you to serve on the city council. In the last election, the person who received the largest voting block but who did not win a seat on the council was Mr. Fred Sykes. The vote of the citizens of West Covina cannot be ignored. Each of the present city council members, in all good conscience, must respect the fact that Mr. Sykes campaigned for a council seat, and over 4,000 citizens voted for and still want Mr. Sykes to have a council seat. If you do anything else, it's a slap in the face to all who voted for Mr. Sykes. You're saying that their vote does not count. Many of you and many of your constituents may not agree with a number of Mr. Sykes' positions on issues that concern this city, but the fact remains that many citizens of West Covina liked what he had to say, and they voted for him. It is not a popular mandate. If that is not a popular mandate, then I don't know what is. How do you ignore the popular vote and appoint someone else? And if you do appoint someone else, then I need to ask, on what basis do you justify appointing someone other than Mr. Sykes? In America, we agree to disagree without killing each other. My son has served the Navy since 1999, and he and other citizens of West Covina are securing our right to have a say in city, county, and federal issues. Other countries do not have George Washington as a founding father. President Day foreign leaders secure power, and they destroy the opposition. I hope that does not happen in my city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was just informed that we have our guests here this evening, so we're going to go ahead and go to our certificate of recognitions and the fun part of our meeting. I will come forward at this time. Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for coming tonight. We have some special guests here tonight, as well as a special recognition to one of our council members this evening. I see his family here, and the support of his family has got him where he is today. And so I'm really glad that you're all here. First, I'd like to call forward the representatives that I'd like to recognize for their service to our community and to the different areas of our city. And I think many of you know that run for office and are involved in politics know it's a hard job. It's got its ups and downs. It takes a lot from your family. But I think it's important that we take time out right now and recognize those people that have served us, no matter if we agree or disagree. We work hard, and we make a lot of sacrifices. So I also wanted to make sure to recognize those people. Our Congresswoman, Judy Chu, whose representative is here tonight, Mr. Fred Ortega, I'd like to call you forward and accept a certificate of recognition for her service as the member of Congress. I appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you. Do you want to say a couple of quick words?
Sure.
Are you?
Of course.
Oh, come on. Put you on the spot.
Of course.
Thank you, Mayor, for hosting me today. And unfortunately, the Congresswoman is in Washington, DC, tonight, so I apologize on her behalf that she could not make it tonight. But she sends her well wishes from Washington. It's her first time back since the break from the recent congressional election, and she wants to assure you all that she's working hard on behalf of all of our constituents here. So thank you so much for presenting this award. I will make sure that she receives it personally, and she is very honored to represent the people and the city of West Covina. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to have a process here tonight, because we have so many people that want to give Roger awards tonight. I wonder why. Next, I'd like to call forward Bill Baca, our field representative for Senator Gloria Romero, and like to present him with a certificate for the Senator Romero's service for California State Senator. Please come forward.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for coming tonight. And of course, I'm going to offer up, say a few words.
Thank you on behalf of Senator Romero for this recognition. She's termed out November 30th, and she's been working hard on education reform, and she's going to continue to do that. She's going to be in charge of an office in Los Angeles, Democrats, for education reform. So you'll be hearing from her. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. And next, we have a recognition. I have Jorge Marquez, Field Representative for Assembly, Dr. Ed Hernandez. Thank you so much for being here this evening. And on behalf of the people, we want to thank Ed for his service, and good luck with his future as well. If you'd like to briefly tell the residents what's going on there.
Sure, definitely. Well, we apologize for that Senator-elect Hernandez not here today. We did have a Thanksgiving food drive going on in the city of Irwindale, but I will definitely give this to him. We want to thank you so much, for all of you for your support, also the city councils, the staff. You guys have been tremendous, such an ally for us, getting community organizations together and just doing what's right for the community. And yeah, we look forward to working with you while we're in the state senate.
Great. Thank you. You can't escape. Next, I have one of our coveted city tiles, and I wonder who this is going to go to. Oh, there's a name on here, and I'd like to call him forward. I'm going to save it the last time. Councilmember Roger Hernandez, please. And as you know, everybody wants one of our coveted city tiles. They're very, very special. And as Mayor of West Covina, I would like to present the city tile to Councilmember Roger Hernandez, Assemblyman-elect for the 57th District. We appreciate all that you've done. I also have more hardware for you as well. I have a resolution of commendation on behalf of the citizens of West Covina, the city council, and the city staff for your dedicated service to the city. It is a hard job, and I know it is, and you've done it, and you've taken the bull by the horns, and we appreciate the time that you serve. And I'm hoping that that professionalism will carry on forward to your job as Assemblyman.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to blink.
This camera doesn't light you, Roger.
Uh-oh.
Maybe it's me. All right. Well, I want me to take that. You'd like to say a couple of things?
Sure, sure, sure. Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, for those of you who've been attending the West Covina City Council meetings, any of you would know that I've been here for a little while, seven years and close to nine months, so pretty close to that eight-year marker. And it's been an incredible experience to work closely with people who care about this city, people that really want to move the city in the right direction. People behind me are great city staff, great city council, and great people in the community here that have expressed just a tremendous interest and care and love for this city. It's been a real big honor to be able to serve West Covina. It was a city that my parents worked so hard, made so much sacrifice to move to from the city of Almani, because they knew there was something really good happening here in the city of West Covina. And with a lot of sacrifice, a lot of pride, we were able to move as children over to West Covina. It was a big, big jump. We lived on a street that was congested, that had vans trucks moving through there every day. To move to a cul-de-sac street that ended up in the opening of Wood Grove Park was a night-and-day difference. And it's for that love and for that appreciation of the kind of community that I had a chance to live in and to grow up in with my family and good neighbors that it's been with a lot of pride that I've had the honor of serving each and every day on the West Covina City Council for the last seven years and nine months. It's been incredible. There's been a lot of exciting times here. There's no doubt that this is probably the most democratic city council in the San Gabriel Valley, because, as you know, in politics, there's a lot of good thoughts, a lot of different thoughts, and the convergence of different thoughts. And I think we've seen that here in the West Covina City Council. But ultimately, I think the city has been better for it. We've seen, and I actually had to write a couple of points down. As many of you know, I kind of just like to speak from the heart, but I'm so proud of the work that's been put together here by this council that I just really wanted to share some of the things I'm incredibly proud of. Coming on the West Covina City Council, I was really, really proud to be part of the Cameron Gymnasium project. I came in very late on that vote, but the previous city council that was working on it worked really hard in developing a good plan to establish a community center for the children. I came on, and there was questions about price and location, but with the help of staff and working with this team, we were able to ultimately get done the Cameron Park Community Center. Really proud of that, because when we drive through there most nights, most days, you see children are utilizing the community, are using those facilities. Not everyone in the community wanted it, but the vast majority of the community wanted it, and I am really proud of that. It was an enhancement to the community. Really honored to have been a part of probably the city that has done the most for economic development as compared to most cities around here, whether it's been the mall expansion, whether it's been, we've seen on multiple occasions currently today, but there's been other expansions as well. The automotive expansion, and today, we haven't seen a dealership leave us yet, and the worst economy since the Great Depression. Been really proud to be a part of that, to see our coffers rebuffed and improved even during economic times like these, has been an incredible time. To have had the opportunity to improve our parks, to expand Shadow Park, to improve Heritage Park, and provide more amenities for the community in terms of open space, green space, for the enjoyment of our communities, our families here in the community, to improve Maverick Park, and many of the parks around the city, to work on that with my colleagues has been a tremendous honor. I know it's something that the residents of this community really, really appreciate. To been a part of expanding Cortez Park, and been part of supporting the trail system there that I know the seniors use from the senior center and utilize that for exercise and recreation, to fight the ills of cancer and the lumina, presence of diabetes that's plaguing our region and our community, that's been a positive outlet for us to combat that as a community with positive outlets. We're very lucky to have those treasures here. To been a part of supporting projects and/or proposing projects that have benefited the community, like the helmet giveaway program. I know that we gave thousands of helmets in the city of West Covina with the use of AQMB dollars. It's just something supported by the whole city council unanimously. I believe that children that have fallen and have probably bumped their heads with a helmet on, and kids in West Covina are safer and better off because of that. This council unanimously also supported the magazine rack cover. There was a parent back in '04 that reached out to me and said, "Councilman, walked into the local convenience store, and my child was looking at magazines that maybe was not intended for that age group." And to have the full support of the city council to support magazine rack cover ordinance here just really put it, made it a clear focus in my mind that this council was very much committed in protecting what children have seen in this West Covina community and protecting a very family-oriented environment. Really, I was honored to be a part of that. The East Valley Community Health Center. We know that this city is a diverse community of all different socioeconomic levels, and to have a community health center like the East Valley Community Health Center thriving here out of West Covina, providing healthcare access, affordable healthcare access to people that don't have it readily, those that are underinsured or employed and have no level of medical insurance, that was a key, not only to West Covina, but also to just the people of this region, to be the home of the East Valley Community Health Center, to have an award-winning center like that, to be part of that vote on this council, working with my colleagues to make sure that it continued its 30-year-plus presence here was definitely an honor. There's just so many things I'm so proud of. The ambulance program here. I love to brag about it. I talked about it in my campaign for the assembly. We have a dynamic, incredible, state-of-the-art ambulance program. It's been affected a little bit by the budget reductions. We have to be honest about that. But this is what we did in a time when staff was looking at budgetary reductions, we were able to work across the aisle with our employee groups. And we have very intelligent staff that came up with a great proposal. They said, "Instead of cutting personnel, why don't we have our own city-run ambulance program? We'll bring in $2 million in revenue. After paying for the new personnel, we'll have about $1 million free and clear, and it'll work better for the city, because we'll also be able, because of local control, cut response time." We cut response time, on average, from eight minutes down to three and a half minutes, saving more lives in West Covina. You have that here in West Covina. Was really proud to work with my council colleagues to make that happen. I think West Covina is in a better, safer situation, position because of that. Honored to have been a part of that. And really honored to have been a part of a community that believes in family-togetherness, whether it's honoring the efforts of the MDA, our fireworks, annual fireworks show in collaboration with MDA and John Hughes, and raising money for such a wonderful cause that's looking to fight that ill that plagues a lot of Americans, Californians, West Covinians. That's something that's been unanimously supported by this West Covina City Council. Incredible, incredible honor to be a part of that. To support the concerts in the park, to support the movies in the park, and to reach out and make sure that we're conscientious about the whole community, the children, the seniors, to support good programs at our senior center has been a significant, significant honor. And I really just want to say that this may be my last city council meeting. There's still a few days left on the clock before we transition into the new role. Thank you for that opportunity. But I will say that I won't stop serving West Covina. I'm going to continue serving the city of West Covina very proudly. And I really hope that as we close this chapter, I get the opportunity to close this chapter in serving, very fortunately with this West Covina City Council, that we get to open a new chapter, a chapter where we get to work together on behalf of West Covinians. I know that my office in the 57th District is going to be proudly serving the people of West Covina and the balance of the cities within the district to make sure that West Covina has strong advocacy, advocacy that's fighting for your best interest, that's going to have an open-door process. I want to let the staff know, and Andy Pazmat, the city attorney, counsel, my door is always open. We're here to work as a team together. And I'm saying that, extending my hand, because I think that in these trying economic times, we know that we have to work together even closer than ever, and the level of communication has to be higher than ever before, because we've just heard about the $26 billion deficit the state's facing. And do I have every answer? Absolutely not. But I know that we're working with people like Mr. Freeland, people in the community here. We're going to come up with some really good ideas, like we did with the fire ambulance program. It made the situation better for us. So looking forward, I look forward in partnering in opportunities to improve the situation for our region, to tackle issues like healthcare, access to healthcare, to improve the health of our region. We know that diabetes is incredibly on the rise, particularly amongst our young people. That's something that cities, this region, we have to tackle. I've met with a lot of doctors in this region, and they said, "This community, the people of San Gabriel Valley, the number-one killer now is diabetes." I want to be someone that works closely with West Covina and the rest of the cities to make sure that we're increasing awareness. We have to do that. We owe it to our youth. But with all of that, I have to say, thank you, West Covina. Thank you all, the residents here, for tolerating me, for being patient with me, for giving me this opportunity to learn and to grow as your representative. I want to thank my family. I want to thank my friends, because undoubtedly, there's been a lot of sacrifice that's been experienced with family, my friends, and everyone that I'm incredibly close to. When you serve, and you serve with the dedication that I see on this council, our families really, they take the number-one brunt in terms of not getting time to spend with us, not complaining, because we've loved the honorable experience and really look forward to this new opportunity. So with that, thank you, Shelley, Madam Mayor, and Council. Thank you so much. I'm looking forward to continuing working with you. I'll be your representative in that building in Sacramento. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Do a quick photo, and then I know you get more awards. What is this? This is what happens? Yes.
Can I make some comments, please?
No. Yeah.
I, too, Roger, want to wish you the best. I know a lot of people don't know that you and I did a lot of things prior to you ever getting on the city council here, back when you were on the school board, when we were either going to ship or hope functions with many of the other young guns that were out there, going around all the new elected officials in the area. But that was, I just think that was a pleasure, and we did have great times. And I know, as over many years, I just want to wish you the best. I know this is something you more have always dreamed of. You like Sacramento. Like I told the newspaper, I don't know if it's a blessing for you, or at $26 billion deficit, you're going to have to roll up your sleeves, so you've got a lot of work before you. So I just want to clearly wish you the best. And like I said, I know that you have worked on this for many years, and you've always, a lot of the group that we were all hung out together with talked about running for office sometime, that your ultimate goal was to get to Sacramento. And I just want to wish you the best when you get there. And I want to say thanks for your family for giving to us. I know it is rough being in politics. Some days, it's good. Some days, it sucks. And I do agree, it takes tolls on families when the articles come out, no matter what, good, bad, or indifferent. One day, you're happy. The next day, you're ducking at least my son at school or whatever. It's different, because you do bear the brunt, the families. We are the politicians. Our families are not. But unfortunately, in politics these days, they become part of it, and they take a lot of the abuse, and they're not the ones that are going for it. But like I said, I want to wish you the best of luck up there. I know Dr. Ed Hernandez is leaving his office. I didn't know Jorge was already guaranteed a job in his new position. So are you announcing your new position? You're going to be with a senator?
No, I'll be with him.
But it's been great, like I said, serving with you for so many years. Like I said, I can only tell you so many different things we did here and trips out and about, that I just had a great time, and so did a lot of the other elected officials who both you and I know. We had some great times together, so it was a pleasure serving with you. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Roger, I just want to congratulate you and wish you all the success in the world and the assembly. I know, just like the other day when we were talking, how when we were in Sacramento, and we drove by, and I said, "I know you're going to be there one day," and you got it. And so congratulations. I know you're going to do a great job for all of us.
Thank you.
So I appreciate everything and working with you. So congratulations to you and your entire family.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, Mom. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And then you're going to get more goodies.
All right. Thank you.
What are we going to do together? Looks like you got you. Thank you. Congratulations, Roger.
Do I have to call forward? Okay. We're going winner again. How's that? Is that a fair thing? I'd like to call forward Fred Ortega with a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Sanderson. I again apologize for the Congresswoman not being able to be here in person. She is busy in Washington, but she did want me to make sure that I was here and present to help celebrate your last council meeting and your inauguration as our newly-elected Assemblyman. The Congresswoman, as you know, has sat in your place before as a longtime councilwoman from Monterey Park. She understands the hard work and the attention to detail and the difficulties and sacrifices that all of you make as members of a city council. And she wanted me to make sure that I thanked all of you for the support that you've given her as councilmembers, both as very thankful for all of your support and for all of your hard work, as well as Councilman Hernandez. And now, she appreciates the fact that you have gone through the same thing that all of you have gone through and that she has gone through as a member of a city council, and know, and bringing that local experience, which is so valuable, to Sacramento. And to work with her as a member of the San Gabriel Valley Coalition of elected officials at the state and federal level. She looks forward to having you as a colleague, and she wanted to make sure that I thanked you for all of your hard work so far, and as Councilman Toohey said, the very difficult work that you have ahead of you in Sacramento. I want, she wants me to make sure that you know that you have an ally in the federal government, that all of you have an ally in the federal government, that West Covina has an ally in the federal government. And therefore, I want to present this certificate of congressional recognition to Assemblyman-Elect Roger Hernandez. In recognition of your leadership and outstanding dedication to the city of West Covina, thank you for over seven years of public service and for establishing a legacy as an exemplary civic leader. Thank you so much on behalf of the people of the city.
Thank you so much again for being here tonight. We really appreciate that. Our next presenter, I'd like to call forward, is Mr. Bill Bock, a field representative for Senator Gloria Romero.
Good evening, everyone. I don't think I need this. Good evening, everyone. I have a certificate of, of, I'm thinking of, Fred.
He's going to go on to the next level.
I have a certificate of recognition from State Senator Gloria Romero, who's trimmed out November 30th. She's going to be heading an organization in Los Angeles called Democrats for Education Reform. So, she already has a job. She's okay. The certificate of recognition is presented to the Honorable Roger Hernandez, City Council Member of West Covina. Service to the community. For your leadership and dedication to the people of West Covina. Best wishes for success in your next endeavor as Assemblymember for the 57th District.
Thank you very much.
And we have our next presenter, Jorge Marquez, field representative for Assemblyman, Dr. Ed Hernandez.
Thank you so much. I know you're going to be getting used to seeing these a lot around the office, so we'll make sure to leave a bunch of them for you. As a little member Hernandez, it's true. As a little member Hernandez, just wanted me to let you know, just thank you so much for your work on, with the West Covina City Council. We're really excited to work, working with you, also working with the Congresswomen, just having a really strong San Gabriel Valley team to make sure that we get the amount of money that we deserve here in the area. So, with that said, we have a certificate of recognition from the California State Assembly, which reads, "Roger Hernandez, from March 2003 to November 2010, in appreciation of your seven years of service to the residents of West Covina, thank you for your dedication and commitment as a public servant, and may you have much success in your new role as California State Assemblymember. Congratulations." Sign Assemblyman Ed Hernandez.
All right. Thank you. Should we take a photo?
And if you would like, we could take a quick break at this time, so you can visit with, like a real quick five-minute break, if you'd like to, before we begin the rest of the agenda.
Sure.
Okay. We're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you all so much for being here.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Hey, Roger. Thank you for rolling with it.
Actually, we had it in another line.
I know.
I know.
That's why I'm sure.
Thank you.
Not that we have the talent.
Yeah.
Sure.
I did try.
Wait.
I'm not that much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you would like, we could take a quick break at this time, so you can visit with, like a real quick five-minute break, if you'd like to, before we begin the rest of the agenda.
Sure.
Okay. We're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you all so much for being here.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Hey, Roger.
Thank you for rolling with it.
Actually, we had it in another line.
I know.
I know.
That's why I'm sure.
Thank you.
Not that we have the talent.
Yeah.
I'm not that much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Not that we have the talent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Should we take a photo?
Yeah.
What can you do?
Well, nice cover.
We saw that part out.
We have to work on those stamps and the little things.
All right.
We have to work on those stamps and the little things.
We have to work on those stamps and the little things.
We have to work on those stamps and the little things.
We have to work on those stamps and the little things.
We have to work on those stamps and the little things.
I think so.
I'm not that much.
Yeah, I'm not that much.
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 What can you do?
Well, I cover.
I saw that part out.
I'm not that much.
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 We have to work on those stamps and the little things.
All right.
We have to work on those stamps and the little things.
All right.
I wouldn't stop.
I'm not that much.
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 Yeah.
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 That's why I'm sure.
Keep that out of there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Don't try not to bury your job.
Yeah.
Both girls.
Oh, both of them.
I mean, I'm having a, 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 I'm
No, no, of course. I guess you better be starting. Really?
I remember.
All right. It's good.
Rogers, I'm leaving. Okay. We'll make it quick so then you can join your family. I'm sure they want to celebrate, so we'll go fast. All right, so everybody heard that, right? All right. Okay. Next, we will continue with our O communications. Our next speaker is Ms. Shirley Buchanan.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember Lane Hernandez and Tui. I wanted to let you know that Jeff Anderson and Tom Bachman got back to me within a couple of days after they'd received my letter with the questions that I had for the council the last meeting. Their, the item about a master plan didn't, we didn't get an answer on that, but we'll come back a little bit later. I want to again congratulate Assemblyman Hernandez on your trip to Sacramento for the next few years. And then I also want to say that the article in the Tribune was, I thought, a very good start on informing the community about this vacancy that is going to be coming up after tonight. And I hope that the council will take some time to put more communication out into the, into the community so that more people know that they can talk to the council people about becoming members of the, to fill the vacancy for Roger. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Boris Duarte.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and citizens of West Covina and everyone else present. This is my first time speaking before you. I have lived in West Covina now for about 16 years. During most of that time, I pretty much ignored what was going on in these chambers because I didn't think it made much difference in my life, at least my daily life. It wasn't until a few years ago that a neighbor made me aware of some of the decisions that were being made here. For example, I live in the southern part of the city and there was a proposal to sell part of our Shadow Oak Park, which, you know, my kids play there, we had birthday parties there, so some of those decisions were very crucial to me. And so the intersection of Nogales and Shakespeare, there was a sale of that, that land and so on. So I decided to become a little bit more vigilant because I wasn't sure that my elected city government was looking out for me or my family. Recently, I helped in the campaign for, for the measure that would have established districts in the city for equal representation. And I did that because I felt that, given the fact that most council members live in a small section of the city, that it does not create the best avenue for making decisions that affect people outside of the small area. Now, when was the last time that any of you visited the San Jose Hills, Woodset Village, or Shadow Oak Park area that was not for an official function and actually talked to some of the constituents? I know that Roger was one of our volleyball games. Anyways, the proposition failed because the other, there were other special interests that supported that measure. The corporations, or why do you think the corporations would care how the city was divided for city council membership? And I think because there was a fear of loss of influence. When it came to representation, I felt that Roger Hernandez was the council member that best represented my views when it came to developments, zoning issues, budgetary matters, and so on. However, he was often the lone dissenting voice in this council, and it seemed to me that there were divisions and cliques here in this council. Now with the election of Roger Hernandez to state office and going on to bigger, not necessarily better because it's state government after all, but our lone voice is gone. So I know that the city, this council has two basic choices: hold an election or appoint someone to the post until the next election. I will be, I believe that the latter will be done because of the cost of holding an election, because this is a great opportunity to appoint someone that could be possibly a crony, someone to join the group so that there are unanimous decisions made. And we know that that would definitely not be in the interest or best interest of West Covina. I don't know if you're familiar with the term "group think," but the situation would be exacerbated by appointing someone like that. The only right candidate to select if you do appoint someone is Fred Sykes. Mr. Sykes is a person that I have known for many years. He's a man of utmost integrity. There are no gray areas for him. He's the type of person that we need for our public servants. He brings diversity and diverse opinions to the table. He has had a distinguished career in public service, and now that he's retired, he wants to continue in public service, he was before a sheriff, so in public service, and now that he wants to continue in public service by being an advocate for the people of West Covina. He will be a strong representative for the southern part of the city, which again, I feel that is lacking at this time, with the exception of Mr. Hernandez. However, he wants to represent all of West Covina, not just that part of the city. I've had many discussions, and he really is interested in making West Covina a much better city. I know that some of you may not be fond of Mr. Sykes because he has run against you or has called you out on some matters, but we know that when there's someone overseeing us, that there is more accountability. And yes, he might be thrown on your side, but isn't that what we want? You know better than anyone that the best decisions are made when there's some different points of view. Always civil, of course, and not the group thing that I referred to earlier, where all the decision makers always agree on everything. So just look at the city of Bell and how far they got, because there were really no one there to provide the necessary checks and balances. One important fact to note is that Fred Sykes was the fourth-leading vote getter in the last election, as was mentioned earlier. Thousands of West Covina citizens voted for him. That means he has a lot of support here in the city. He has organized the community and has conducted a grassroots campaign. So it is therefore the fairest thing to appoint Mr. Sykes to this city council. Furthermore, since he's retired, he has the luxury that I don't have at this time, and that is a lot of time to devote to the needs of the city of West Covina and the citizens of this great city. So I implore you to do the right thing and appoint Fred Sykes as the new council member to replace Roger Hernandez. If you make that appointment, then you will.
Madam Mayor, Speaker, see their five minutes.
That was Latinos apoyar a Fred Sykes.
Our next speaker is Ms. Joanne Willner.
Joanne Willner, West Covina. Good evening, Mayor Sanderson and fellow council members. The presenter who spoke before me, I think, did a very good job of covering lots of things, but I still would like to say what I have written. Though the election is not yet certified, it is certain that Roger Hernandez is our next state assembly representative. Congratulations to you. You have attempted to do many things for the city, but have met resistance along the way. Better luck in the assembly. Next month, you, the remaining council members, have to make the choice between holding a special election at a cost or appointing a replacement. Fred Sykes is a perfectly qualified choice for you to make. He is well-versed in police matters, having had a career in that field. He has participated in a variety of city commissions and attended meetings regularly. He ran in the last two elections, being the first runner-up in 2009 with over 4,000 votes. No one else has shown such interest in serving the city. He would bring a fresh point of view to the council. I do hope you can see it in your hearts and appoint Fred Sykes to fill the vacancy, the council vacancy. I want to just add beyond that something regarding this audio that we have now instead of the video, which I do miss and feel we should have. From my experience with it, I do believe there needs to be some, I guess you would call it instruction, some tutor page to show you how to get around it and what it means to click on what and when, just how it works, because I found it difficult to just do it intuitively, and I don't think it has anything to do with whether I have a Mac or a PC. It's just the nature of it, and I don't think I'm alone there because I have had lots of experience with the computer. So I'd appreciate it if something instruction-wise could be added so people will know how to use it, but really, we still need to replace it with the video such that it can be seen on a television, because my computer, which has the audio, is only in one room, and I don't normally work there, whereas we have a television in almost every room, and it's like a radio there that could be used if it were available, but unfortunately, it's not. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elsie Messman. Elsie Messman?
Mayor, council, staff, and everyone here tonight. My name is Elsie Messman, and I've been a resident of West Covina for 35 years. First, I want to congratulate Councilwoman Roger Hernandez for the good job he did in representing the people. We will miss you, Roger, but rest assured, we will keep you posted on what the council is doing. Councilwoman Roger Hernandez was elected by council, by the people. Why can't he appoint whoever he chooses to replace himself? After all, he paid for and won the spot on the council, or else, like Joanne or Mr. Romero said, Fred Sykes got the most votes in the last election, should be an automatic, an automatic shoe-in. There is complete lack of transparency. There is no transparency. When there is no transparency, only bad things are happening, as witnessed on TV and the newspaper in several cities around the Southern California area. Right now, we have no cable internet for the residents of West Covina. Where is our transparency? Our only information comes from the Discovery magazine, which is only six times a year, written by a woman working from home that doesn't know what's going on and is being paid $80,000-plus in benefits for per year. And when you read it, all it is is fluff and puff. We have resorted, they have resorted to pictures, and nobody cares about the pictures. Why is this woman not on disability? Or why are we paying her with our tax dollars? This is an example of mismanagement. The only reason I can see that she's still on the job is she has friends on the council. And if she works long enough, she will probably be 100% vested in her benefits. The Discover San Gabriel Valley paper that came in the San Gabriel Tribune a couple of weeks ago, there is not one item on West Covina in this whole paper. And you expect us to spend our tax money here? On what? Okay. Councilman Tui, now you are worried about a special election that could cost $120,000-plus, but you and four council members weren't worried when you spent $57 million on what is called the Heights. You gave big contracts to the police and fire department, and then they supported you, Lane and Sanderson by spending $34,000 and putting you back into the office, only to be thrown under the bus. May this be a lesson to all. Mr. Hereford is not here, which is understandable, but back in 2006, when Mayor Hereford stated he approved the purchase of land at the Heights, also known as the dump, to be sold to Charles Company for 1.1 million because it makes the city money to the tune of $5.3 million. I didn't know that dry weeds could make that kind of money. Maybe the city council should look into ways of making money by raising weeds. The council has also changed the procedure of putting commissioners on five boards. Before, each council member could put one rep on the board, and which only makes sense as they can inform the council member of what's going on. No more. This council changed the rules, and they have to be approved by this council. Guess what? Councilman Hernandez's appointments were all taken off. Surprise, surprise. This is just a few examples of how this council has misused our tax dollars. Just remember here tonight, ladies and gentlemen, that this city council, Tui, Hereford, Sanderson, and Lane, got us into this mess and because of, got us into the mess that we're in today. And I will close by saying, we are, we feel like we're being mushrooms, left in the dark and fed a bunch of manure. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jessie Ramirez. I don't see anyone coming forward. No Jessie Ramirez. Bruce Lineback.
Yeah, City Council. First of all, I want to announce that I'm a big West Covina football supporter. I've gone to the football game for 21 years, and this year, they're number one seed. They play Bellflower, West Covina. So we need all you councilmen. Mr. Tui, you're one of our big supporters. So hey, I hope you come. So secondly, I want to congratulate Councilman Roger Hernandez being elected. He's been very diligent. He had an independent voice. He stood up for a lot of occasions where he was the 4-1 vote. He was the only one making a stand different from the others. And I remember particularly how he's always been an advocate for the cable TV, in contrast to the rest of the city, a big supporter for it, and also on a couple of developments, like the Shadow Oak Park development, and also the development on Sunset. He rallied the residents, hit their opinion, and both those projects were altered because of his input. So he's, a lot of times, he's stood up, he's been the 4-1, even though he's sometimes castigated by his views. But I appreciate his independence, and maybe you tell all those Democrats and Republicans how things stand there, Roger, in the, in the assembly, right? So my concern right now on this city council is this, right now, we got basically a 4-1, Roger's leaving, and basically, it's almost like, say, you have five Republicans or five Democrats on a council. There are no independent, independents, basically. And like, you got the commissioners, I don't think all your appointments were basically, or most of them were not approved. And it's like, everybody's almost thinking alike, and that's, that's why I'm concerned. We have this 4-0 council or whatever, they got to make a decision. And probably, they're going to make somebody more amenable to their feelings or their views. Mr. Sykes is kind of independent. I think he'd do a good job, but we need some, some independent people on there, and I think you ought to take applications. We got to have somebody independent, not necessarily from your group, but I mean, right now, it's 4-0, and pretty soon, it's going to be 5-0. That's, that's what my concern is, is that there won't be any independents. With Roger gone, he was almost like the watchdog. And I really, that's one of my big concerns. Also, I want to touch on something else is this. One of my biggest concerns about the future of West Covina is the budget. It seems that we're going to have to make more cuts and more cuts and more cuts. Just made a lot of cuts this year, projected to have a $7 million deficit next year. And what I'm concerned is that we have a kitty over there, and they call it the redevelopment agency. And I'm be, we're really adamantly opposed to the council taking money from the redevelopment agency and use that to fund deficits. Also, back in 1980, I was very involved in a big political event that happened in our city, real negative. West Covina School District, which I've been a big supporter and advocate for, they declared bankruptcy. And I just don't want to see this happen again, that say, the city of West Covina's going to go broke. Found West Covina's high school or schools, I remember, they had this big meeting at the high school, and everybody had, they had to vote which high school was going to be the high school when they voted for West Covina. But I just remember all the trauma and all the agony and all the problems we had, and really apprehensive is that way we're going, I almost feel like, almost going the same way. But we got to take some stands, and like, we need some other independent, independent councilmen to come in and give his independent thought, too. So thank you very much, and congratulations, Mr. Roger.
Our next speaker is Fred Sykes.
Good evening, Mayor Sanderson and Councilmember and Assemblyman-elect Roger Hernandez, Councilmember Lane, and Councilmember Tui. Good evening to staff and everyone that's present in the audience. I really don't have too much to say tonight. I am just really overjoyed with all the folks that have come forward and that have supported me. There have been times when I was out there, walking all over the city, my feet were aching, some doors were getting slammed in my face, but even with those setbacks, I kept my eye on the goal of contacting folks, finding out their concerns, and making them aware of who I was and what I was trying to do. And tonight, I just want to say thank you to those folks who came from all over the city. It is heartwarming, and it's a pleasure, and it makes me feel very good about extending myself out there to meet all of you. And of course, we know, as the last speaker spoke about the budget, that is, of course, a major concern, and it's definitely going to take a lot of sacrifices. Some have already been given with jobs and so forth, and what we're going to have to dig deeper. We know that this budget, it compromises the city, it threatens our public safety, and of course, our, our city services. And it definitely makes us have to do a lot more with less. But I think, just like the, the times I was out there, the city council, it's got a lot of burden on its shoulder, and I think that all of us, including citywide, know that we're going to have to tighten our belts and, and deal with this situation. So in closing, again, I want to say thank you to everyone, especially the Assemblyman-elect. It was with his encouragement that our community stepped up, came forward, and now we're voting and voting, and more of us are involved. As you can see tonight, we had quite a few people from the south side. And to the city, I just want to say that those who aren't aware of me, I am Frederick Sykes, and I have worked with a lot of people on various causes from all around the city. And what we're asking the, this council to do is just to respond to the will of the people and to rise above the narcissistic and negative politics and do the right thing for the city. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Forrest Wilkins.
Congratulations, Roger. Good evening, Council. I have two items I'd like to address. First of all, I went to our local community theater last Thursday night with my daughter and her husband. We went and saw Red. If you haven't heard about it, RED stands for Retired Extremely Dangerous, starring Bruce Willis. Has quite a few. Anyway, after the movie, we exited and we went to the exit that goes out to the courtyard where Macaroni Grill and all that one. There's four doors there. I pushed on three of them. None of them worked. Before I got to the fourth one, my son-in-law got that one. We opened it up. Friday morning, I called and talked with Captain Montgomery, I think it is, at Fire Station One. He assured me he was gonna go check it out. I did a follow-up today, talked with a fire inspector. He did go out and check Captain Montgomery and issued a citation. They have five days to correct that, and the inspector, fire inspector's gonna be following up again on it tomorrow. However, coming from the service community, meaning the police and so forth, just a little personal thing, when I spent my 30 years with the Los Angeles Police Department, I spent 23 years in traffic. When you get to a traffic accident situation and people are gone to the hospital and so forth, and you have a wrecked car out in the middle of the intersection with oil and antifreeze and everything, you don't wait five days to get that cleaned up. You get it cleaned up right now. You might have motorcyclists coming through the intersection, they'll slip and fall. Anyway, take immediate attention. So, I think when we are aware of a theater that has exit doors that aren't working, something should be done immediately, such as maybe if they can't get the doors repaired, maybe they should have someone standing there with the doors jar. I mean, how would we feel if we had, say, our youth there in the theater, and something happened, they had to exit and they couldn't? So, anyway, that's that. Now, speaking about the fire department, last time that we, we, City Council picked a fire chief, went throughout the country to select who they thought was the best fire chief. What was it? Two-thirds, three-quarters way across the country? Fire chief came from what, Indiana or Illinois, Chicago? You know, you searched the country for the best qualified fire chief, and you felt you got him, right? Well, now, we're gonna have a vacancy, so I think we gotta search our community for the best qualified councilperson to replace Roger. Fred Sykes is the best qualified person to take Roger's place. A lot has been said tonight. I'm not gonna add any more to it. I think you get the point. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. John Schumaker.
Thank you, and congratulations, Roger. Wish you well up there. One of the things I wanted to point out as people talk about the voters and things like that, is it's amazing how many times people talk about the voters, and we need to listen to them. And when time again, time after time after time, the voters say no to someone or to something, they keep saying, "We need to listen to the voters." You know, it took me three times running for the school board before I got smart enough that the voters said, "John, we don't want you." And so, I sat back and said, "Okay, you don't want me." Fortunately, they like my daughter, so. But when, when I sit here and listen to this, I think back of all the different things that go on. You know, back in 2005, I remember Mayor Sanderson was running for reelection, and she said, "This is my vision for the city. This is what I want the city to be. These are the developments I want. This is the programs I want in our city." She got the highest number of votes ever recorded in our city by giving that vision. Two other people painted basically the same type of vision, Councilmember Lane and Councilmember Tui. They got the second and third highest votes in that election. 2007 comes along, one of the council members, Mr. Hurford, paints a vision, says, "This is what I want the city to be," and it's kind of like those other three people. He comes in first again for what, the fifth, fourth or fifth time that he's come in first? You know, that he's run? Then in 2009, the three of you were up for reelection, and you said, "This is the vision I want. This is what we've done, and this is the vision I want to continue." You came in for a second and third again. So, somewhere along the line, the voters must be saying, "You know, we kind of like the vision that you're painting for the city. You know, we want to keep that going." If you talk, one of the things, too, that people talk about is, well, what was the standing of the other people? I remember getting up here in 2001, when one council member had won, and was rather proud that, I think, for the second time or third time, had received the highest vote total that anybody had won. And I wanted to point out that even though they'd received 6,000 votes, at the time, there were somewhere around, I think, 106,000 people in our city and about 50,000 voters, I pointed out that 44,000 of those voters said, "We don't want you," or "We don't care." So, you know, that isn't always the way you have to look at it. If you want to sit down and look at it, in the last election, there were about 22,000 votes cast. Over 17,000 of them said, "We don't want the following people." You know, even those who received high vote totals had, you know, probably a majority of the people saying, "Well, we're not too crazy about everything you're doing, but, you know, we can only vote for, you know, three people at a time." You know, I have never felt that I wasn't represented by anybody. Roger, Sherry, Lane, Steve, or Mike, you know, that I could go to each one of them, state my case, and in some cases, they've said, "I agree with you," and in other cases, they've said, "No, I don't." But I've always had five people to go to. And what I've really liked in being involved in the city is I've seen the situations that have come up where things have changed. When BKK was trying to be closed, there was a member of this council who didn't want to vote to close it and do what was necessary. The people who would not have been in that, if we had had districts then, BKK would still be open, because people who were not in those districts went to that person and said, "You vote to keep this thing open, we're filing recall papers on you tomorrow." That person changed their vote because they knew the entire city could vote for him, not just one specific area. So, you have more of an impact. I agree. We probably do need somebody from the South Side, wholeheartedly, you know, to help that area. And there's a person who's been out there for 20 years, helping this community, working to close BKK, working to get things done down there, working to get rid of that awful scar that's on the community, that was on the community out there, who's been involved in everything, no matter what section of the city it was in. You know, and I think somebody who's been involved for 20 years, you're right, deserves to be on the city council. So, I hope when you guys do get around to appointing somebody, because I assume you will, that you'll be supporting Herb Redholtz for that position. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, that's all our speaker cards that we do have, and we will move forward. And, oh, actually, just to let the people know that spoke, I appreciate everybody being here today and, and, you know, voicing their, their interests. We will not be discussing it. It's not on our agenda. So, you know, that will be discussed at a later time. So, with that, our consent calendar, is there a motion or is anything, I have a motion to approve the consent?
Sorry, motion approved.
So, a motion, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'm, bear with me, enter the consent. This is a new format for me, and I'm, I'm an old-fashioned kind of gal. Mayor, Councilmember reports, AB 1234, conference meetings, anyone have anything to report? Okay. City Council, Community Development Commission requests or reports or studies or investigations. Okay. Council, Community Development Commission comments. Councilmember Tui.
One more time, I want to express congratulations to Roger, and I know sometimes you felt it was hard getting three votes here. I want to tell you, in Sacramento, you need 41. And that, that is a difficult task to reach, and a plus 21 in the Senate. So, I just want to wish you, I know it's a lot of hard work you're gonna have up there, and like I said, I know people don't understand all the, they're talking about our budget. I mean, just the unemployment account alone is gonna be, over the next three years, $31 billion in the hole. The money is staggering. It is never gonna be as usual again. The deficits, the unfunded liability due to pension obligations with the community college system, the school systems, and the regular employee systems is, is absolutely staggering. It's well over, right now, well over $100 billion today in a deficit. When you add up everything, we're around 150 to 200 billion in the hole that has to be solved over the next three years. So, Roger, good luck there. You know, like I said, I didn't think it was gonna be an easy task, but congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you. And if I, if I could just add, again, it's, it's been an incredible ride to serve on the West Covina City Council. Wasn't easy to get elected twice as a city council. It's, I would say, it's probably one of the tougher cities to campaign in. It's, it takes a lot of work, a lot of, a lot of good people out there that care about, you know, the issues, that care about who's running, and they want to be well abreast on the issues. I really do hope that when the, the council comes together and we finally ultimately have an appointment, I think that council's gonna go down the path of an appointment, that the council will, you know, restore the cable broadcasting. I think still today that this is one of the only cities, if not the only city in California, that terminated the broadcasting of council meetings. It honestly saddens me to see these monitors off. I think the people at home, particularly the disabled and the seniors and the hard-working families that are having dinner right now at this moment, who would like to know what the government is doing, are, you know, cut off from that, from that channel, from that avenue of kind of having a greater, more transparent picture of what the government does. But before we, we close out, I did have a, a letter that I'm gonna be providing to the, to the city council. I formally want to put it in the record. I wanted to read it to all of you. You know, I, I think Mr. Schumacher put it well. He said, you know, the voters have voted, the voters have indicated who they want advocating for them, the voters have said to all of us who they want speaking. And I think that I have a 20% share still today, and I definitely like to chime in and give my 20%, because at the end of the day, the voters did give me the opportunity to be one of the voices up here. So, with that, you know, I'd like to read a letter that I'm addressing the city council. It reads as follows. "To the honorable members of the West Covina City Council, I write this letter to express my strong support for Frederick Sykes, one of the community's strongest advocates for public safety, education, and overall betterment, as he looks, as he seeks your support for appointment to the West Covina City Council. Fred, retired peace officer, has lived in West Covina for over 30 years. He has advocated side by side with the people we are entrusted with representing. Time after time, he has appeared before this honorable city council to articulately and intelligently represent the community's best interests. He is an individual with considerable support from the community. In fact, I think we've witnessed over 4,000 votes in the previous election, and it is not an uncommon practice that city councils, when there's an opportunity for appointment, they do look at the previous election and they do appoint the, the runner-up. It's happened most often in Azusa with the appointment of Angel Corillo, who's been a very good councilman in Azusa, with the appointment of Mr. Gonzalez, Councilman Gonzalez, Robert Gonzalez, who is a friend to all of us here on this council. That process also lent to his appointment to the city council, proven to be a beloved council member in Azusa, doing a good job through the same process that I'm really encouraging all of you to partake in. I think there's a lot of support from the community to go down that path. He, Mr. Sykes, again, 4,000 in the last election, a few thousand in the previous. I think he'd be an invaluable colleague with experience, passion, and knowledge, bringing a new and diverse voice in the time of challenge. Most importantly, Fred Sykes has demonstrated a unwavering commitment to ethics and service as a former planning commissioner for the city and a steward of the community. His involvement and hard work has most certainly improved the lives of the residents in our city. I think we've witnessed that. The integrity and dedication Fred Sykes has exemplified has earned him my support. I hold heartily hope that city council will support Fred Sykes for appointment to the city of West Covina City Council. Respectfully yours, your colleague, still today, Roger Hernandez." I'll tell you this much, I, there's no secret that Fred Sykes is someone I have a lot of respect for. When it's, it's, we need a lot more people in the community that are willing to take, make of their time to fight issues that benefit our community's interest. I think this council does that. I think this council has seen a lot of appointees here that have come before us to have, to serve at that level. I know that Mr. Sykes has done it with a lot of adversity and has taken on challenges that have really enriched and protected neighborhoods. That's why I, I give him my 100% unwavering support. I hope the council will really consider that. We need to have diverse voices on this council. This is a community that, that is a beautiful cross-section of California's diversity, both in the ethnic diversity and the political registration of this community. We need to have that represented on this council. I know that the community and all the community members that I've talked to want to see that diversity reflected here at this dais. That's what, as an assembly member, I'm gonna work to make sure that the differing views of this region are reflected, and they shine up in the sky like a powerful spectrum that we can see from Hacienda Heights to Azusa, from the, from the 57th to the 605, and, and Sacramento's watching out for that beacon and paying attention to what's going on in this region. So, with that, thank you, resident of West Covina, for giving me the opportunity to serve. I'm proudly looking forward to continuing to serve you in the State Assembly, and thank you colleagues for giving me the opportunity to work side by side with you. I know you'll make good decisions. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Lee.
Once again, I just want to thank you again for your years of service to West Covina, and I know you'll be a good advocate for everybody you represent, and congratulations once again.
Thanks, Sherri.
Okay, with that, we're about ready to adjourn. I, again, would like to say thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Tui.
Adjournments?
Oh, you have an adjournment?
Yes.
Okay, I was just, okay, go ahead.
Go ahead. If you're gonna talk, I'll wait.
Yeah, I just, well, okay. I just wanted to say, again, congratulations to Councilmember Hernandez, and thank you for serving West Covina. It's amazing to think about how quickly seven years does go by. And, you know, after speaking hearing for you, the residents this evening, I believe we all have diverse voices. I think those that say that have not paid a lot of attention to the fact that there was an election, I think, a couple of years back, where we all chose different people, and that was our choice. And I also wanted to point out, Mr. Hernandez, that, or can I already call you Assemblyman-Elect Hernandez, that I was with you on that graffiti contract. I was with you on the Roland Unified. I was with you on the ambulance contract. I've been there with you. We agree and we disagree. And I enjoyed working with you. And I think what we all need to remember is, we all disagree and we all agree, but let's keep it professional and respectful. Let's not call each other corrupt politicians. Not, let's not call each other names, and, and it's not personal. This is about our city and what really matters to all of us. It's important, and I want to do the best that I can to represent everybody here, and I may not agree with everybody. I may not agree with Mike, Sherry, Steve, Roger, Andy, you know, everybody. But I think the bottom line is, we're all sitting here tonight for the same reason, because we do care. And I'm glad that you guys all care to be here, too, to support Councilmember Hernandez and his endeavors, and I know we'll be seeing him, because we see Dr. Ed all the time. And so, this is an important thing, to just put the personnel issues aside and just do what we believe is best. We may not agree with theories. I didn't agree with Measure D. Roger did. You know, that's the way it goes, and the people voted, and so now, we move on. And now, let's tackle our next goal, and that is making this man our next Assemblyman, so that we can have great things happen in our district. So, with that, I now will give the floor to Mr. Tui for his adjournments.
One thing I'll make, it's kind of a joke, but I was told a long time ago, as I attended church, that God answers all prayers. Sometimes, the answer's no. And you just have to remember that when you're praying for things, you don't always get what you wish for. So, it's just a humble thought. I want to adjourn the meeting in memory of a friend of mine, a very good friend of mine, and I had the pleasure to serve with her when she was on a council member with the city of Long Beach, Senator Jenny Oropesa, who I've had the pleasure, like I said, to go out with dinner with her and her mom. And it was this tragic to her to succumb to her cancer, and she will be sadly missing the state legislature. She still won her seat, even though she had passed prior to the election, and they will have to go through a, a special election process. But I've just known her ever since I've been on the city council, and she was greatly instrumental in supporting me when I ran for the AQMD seat in securing Long Beach, which is one of the largest cities in California for me. But this, everything she stood up for and she advocated for, she was this truly a blessed person, and I, I'm, I'm gonna miss her. I don't know if anyone else has really got to know her or meet her that much, but Senator Oropesa is all different levels she served at. And she started, you know, in the school boards, worked her way all the way up, like I said, from Assemblyman to Senator, will be missed.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Hernandez.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to be remiss if I didn't say thanks again to the staff. I know that sometimes my passion for getting everything on the table, maybe at times, came off as a little too assertive at times. Didn't mean to hurt anybody's feelings, but just wanted to make sure that people were getting all the facts. I also want to make sure that, you know, that I, I give a big thank you to our police chief, our fire chief, all the personnel with public safety, all the personnel miscellaneous groups, and everyone in between, city manager, city attorney. Definitely, West Covina is a very dynamic city, having an independent police and fire service, working with all the different departments. A lot of cities don't have internal departments like we have here in this community, and it just, it makes for a tremendous operation that requires a lot of strong leadership, that requires a lot of strategic coordination. departments like we have here in this community, and it just, it makes for a tremendous operation that requires a lot of strong leadership, that requires a lot of strategic coordination, and it couldn't be put together without, uh, very vibrant, intelligent people, and we have that here in West Covina. Really proud of being a part of a team like this. Uh, the best police chief, fire chief, the best kinda staff that, uh, that are the envy of all the cities around the San Gabriel Valley exist here in West Covina. Uh, again, just really, really, really proud, and, uh, it's kinda hard to say goodbye. Been here, I feel like, uh, I'm not supposed to leave quite yet, but I, I just, uh, I want to make sure everybody's thanked. I want to make sure that all my commissioners are thanked, uh, because, uh, you know, commissioners put in many, many hours, and definitely not compensated for the hours that they put in. Commissioner Christina Sparza on Community Services Commission, Frederick Sykes on the Community Services Commission, as well as the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, HR Commission, as well as the Planning Commission. Mr. Sessa Cervantes, thank you so much for your hard work. Mr. Andrade in the HR Commission, thank you very much for your years of service. Grace Barrios was also very much a hard-working commissioner here in the city of West Covina, has, uh, been appointed by at least a couple of council members. Uh, just a, a great Shirley Buchanan, thank you very much with your work on the Arts Commission. Uh, I know that, uh, your dedication was definitely in the best interest of the public. It was an honor to have worked with all of you. If I missed anybody, I do apologize sincerely, but I want to tell you, uh, thank you for allowing me to have been a part of this team. Uh, it's been a tremendous, tremendous honor. Uh, my biggest accomplishment yet. Thank you very much.
With, with that, would you like to make the motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With that, I'll call a motion for adjournment.
I'll second that, and also want to invite you, Roger's getting sworn in, I believe, December 6th, and he's taking everyone out to Morton's Steakhouse.
All right.
All right, Roger.
Well, we'll, we'll figure something out.
Yeah.
For appetizers.
Congratulations again. We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.